What's up? Good morning, town of Prescott Valley. Special Town Council Meeting. Study session, September 18th, 2025. Quick please, follow.
Councilmember Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Keel.
Present.
Councilmember Froy. Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Searcher.
Here.
Mayor Polgudin.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. First item up, Citizens Recreation Facility Advisory Committee. Barton, welcome, sir.
Mayor and council, today we have representatives from the Citizen Recreation Facility Advisory Committee coming to talk about their work that they've been performing over the last several months. They've been meeting over the summer. They've come to a recommendation for a recreation facility, and they want to present that to you this evening for your consideration. We are going to come back to the council for an approval of this recommendation. So just today, it is just for information to understand kind of the process that they went through. I do want to acknowledge the committee and all the hard work that they put in. They spent their summer dedicated to this process. It's a complicated process. There's a lot of moving parts to it. They put a lot of work into it, and they were very dedicated. So I just want to acknowledge them for all the work and everything they put into this process. It was a lot. Today, we have the chair and co-chair of the committee. So it was Eric Tetral. He's going to come up first for the presentation, and then Patricia Betzel is going to come up after Eric to continue the presentation. After their presentation, I will come up for any questions and discussion.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Skylar. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Other committee members. Thank you for coming out. Oh, we have to do this. There we go. So the Citizen Recreation Facility Advisory Committee. I'm only going to say that. That was one. So I appreciate the council and the town putting that committee together. I think it did a good job getting a good cross-section of folks together to come to a consensus on the committee's offerings. But as you can see on the slide, the committee was created and set forth with your resolution 2025-2405 that created the committee and established its bylaws and timeline. So we served up until just short of August 31st of this year, and we had 15 members. Over in the blue, you can kind of see how that timeline drug, and it'll continue to go into the years, into the future. The purpose of the committee was actually relatively simple. The next two slides will show that. But it kind of focused on the what and the how. But to get there, we wanted to serve as a voice of the community. So very good cross-section of folks, from varying demographics to stay-at-home workers, parents, to retirees, to different recreation-type users, to long- and short-term citizens. So it was a good cross-section. And we wanted to provide the council direction on how to proceed with our recommendations. So we focused on the what and the how. What amenities we're going to put in the facility, and then how we would go about funding or propose, go about funding and going in that direction. The work, three kind of phases that we did for the committee. First was to lay the foundation. And arguably, that was a lot, almost most of the work. We first wanted to establish the purpose, both of the committee and the facility itself. And to do that, we kind of had to look at a lot of data from vast town surveys to different entity surveys, whether it was the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA over in Prescott. We looked at a lot of data to understand what the town members needed, what different demographics needed, what past recreation surveys showed that the citizenry wanted. We also conducted surveys, I'm sorry, tours. We toured both the Boys and Girls Club. We toured the Mountain Valley Splash. We toured the YMCA, just to get an idea of what some of those facilities have, what amenities we have in town currently, and what other rec facilities are offering, and understand the voids that there might be in the community. So then we determined the what. So that was going through the potentially countless amenities that we could have. And we were able to whittle that down. We're going to go through what those amenities are here in a second. But then, once we have the what, then we could establish how we would go about funding it, because we have an estimated cost. We have an estimated impact of what those amenities would cost. So in doing that, that took us to the how. So from there, we had to, and we, Selena and her team came out and gave several, a couple presentations that were very detailed and very good to understand how the town worked from a budget standpoint, how we can go about financing things, what those financing implications are from a nonprofit versus a for-profit model, how that impacts bond funding and sales tax and property tax. And so we'll, Patricia gets the pleasure of that piece. So we will have that shortly. Then, this summarizes our recommendation. So you're going to see our recommended amenities first, and then we'll step through those slide by slide on kind of what we thought those amenities might offer. So the amenities we came down to were seven. By and large, all of the community surveys recommended or even commanded an indoor pool. So the indoor pool, or a pool, was, across all surveys, the highest recommended offering. Also a gymnasium, basketball-style gymnasium, back multipurpose, weight and conditioning space, part-time child watch. And when we look at that on the slide, what we're talking about there is a couple hours at a time to allow a parent to utilize the facility, whether it's working out, or pool, or whatever the case might be. But part-time child watch, group exercise studios, multipurpose rooms, and an indoor track. So we will look at what those are, one by one. So the indoor pool. We settled on kind of a reasonable accommodation for that pool to be a six-lane, 25-meter swimming pool. Over in Mountain Valley Splash, they offer something very similar, and the high school takes advantage of that. So offering something similar to that was one part of our recommendation. This would offer, allow for open swim. There would be a slide slash pad-type child recreation area. And then, of course, locker rooms would be required as well. So that would be a part of that indoor pool slash aquatic center. Also, the gymnasium in this upper-right picture is somewhat representative of the recommendation. In the upper-right later, we'll talk about an indoor track, but it would kind of be conceptualized like that. An upstairs indoor track that runs the perimeter of the gymnasium was one of the recommendations. So utilize the space a little bit more efficiently. So from a gymnasium standpoint, obviously, multi-use. Basketball, volleyball, pickleball, badminton, croquet. No, that's not a, no, that's not right. Community events can be held there. Dividing curtains, bleachers, scoreboards. So it could be certainly a multi-use facility for several sports at a time, or multiple leagues or age groups at a time. Then the weight and conditioning space, pretty standard type of cardio, free weight, strength training equipment. So more of an exercise studio feel, as far as where that would lay out and windows and appearance. But that's the plan for that space. And then part-time child watch, couple hours at a time. This is a place for just kids to be able to have fun. There's not an educational element to this. It's not a, like a preschool, but more just a child watch. A place for kids to stay while their parents utilize the amenities. Registration, seating space, activities, toys, play equipment inside as well. Group exercise studio. So varying uses here, but they could be for dance, yoga, wellness-type activities. These would have, obviously, mirrors, sound systems, TVs. They could be adaptable to spin classes or different type of group classes. All of that equipment could be cleared out and utilized for some other activity as well. So almost a flexible space. Multipurpose rooms. These can be used for a lot of the activities and classes and things that the town currently offers over in their parks facility, which would allow them to have some parks offices back over there, which would extend the usability of that space and move some of that activity to this space. So there was that consideration of having multipurpose rooms for some of the offerings that they do. It also could be rented out for child, I shouldn't say necessarily child, but birthday parties, baby showers, any other group gatherings. It could be a rentable-type facility for that. And then finally, coming back to it, the indoor track. So that lower, both of those images are actually representative of the concept, but a few lanes of indoor track that would run upstairs, circle, probably generally the gymnasium, but be available for walking, running, jogging. There would be lap and time counters that help people kind of understand their pace. And I think that takes you to Ms. Patricia.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank you for allowing me to participate with this advisory committee. It was a great experience. Fifteen very diverse people, but in the end, we were unanimous in almost every decision. And thank you for letting me speak to you today. As Skylar and Eric pointed out, the committee's purpose was to act as the voice of the community and to provide the council direction on how to proceed with the what, as described by Eric, and the how. How will this recreation facility be funded? And we'll go into that in detail. We were given two options. The first option was a general obligation bond secured by secondary property tax, or, option two, revenue bonds secured by an excise, otherwise known as the sales tax revenues. So how did we make our decision? First of all, we focused on our role as the voice of the community. And everyone did a wonderful job of not basing it on their own personal preferences, but thinking about the community itself. It's very diverse. We have single folks. We have young working families with children. We have people who are retired and on a fixed income and everything in between. So how would they be affected? It was mentioned that increasing property taxes may be burdensome or even disastrous for some families. The sales tax, instead, would spread the burden to include people who aren't residents but come to PV to shop. We also considered whether it was fair to tax residents to subsidize services they might not use. Maybe they already have access to an HOA and its amenities. Perhaps they have a private gym that they prefer to go to. Or maybe physically, you know, they're just not able to participate. We also considered the cost implications when selecting the number of amenities, and whether we could provide the services that were important to the community and perhaps come close to the original cost target. After much education, reflection, discussion, like 10 meetings worth, this committee voted unanimously that sales tax should be used as the dedicated funding source. The committee then voted unanimously, again, to oppose financing through a secondary property tax. The dedicated sales tax increase would generate revenue and serve as collateral for the issuance of bonds. Number two, that funding would be secured through a bond for the total project cost. There is some question on what that total project cost would be and what it would include. We know it would include the construction of the building, but would it include fixtures, furniture, and equipment? Does it include all the operating costs of staffing and maintenance? Would it include subsidies, et cetera? And that is a question that all of you will be working on after you decide whether or not to approve this. Number three, the town will remain financially conservative, and they will follow its debt management policy, policy 4-14. That policy includes maintaining the town's fiscal, or, excuse me, sound financial position, minimizing debt service and issuance costs. In other words, for example, a half-cent tax may be added instead of a quarter-cent tax in order to pay off the debt faster and result in an overall lower cost. And that, of course, is something else you'll get into detail with. Next slide, please. Did it work? Yes. Okay. No. It didn't work. There. Sorry about that. They're always so different. So the other thing that we looked at is, the committee spent, I think, more than 10 weeks together. We went to all these meetings and field trips. We engaged with contractors, legal counsel, finance counsel, the YMCA, Parks and Recs, et cetera, et cetera. So some of us felt that based on what we had learned, we believed that we had more to contribute to the conversation with the council in town than just to answer the why and the how, which is our only, our main mission. These are what we call other considerations that we would like to submit to the council for their consideration in their final decision-making. The first consideration is location. The committee believes that the land selected should maximize integration with existing recreational facilities. In other words, it should be integrated into our current portfolio, perhaps at one of the locations, et cetera. But it shouldn't be considered and looked at apart, because Parks and Rec staffing and operational costs will, as I understand it, come out of the same dedicated funding source. So that's quite a bit different than many of us thought going into this. The other reason for doing that is that integrating it into existing recreational facilities will help support multi-generational activities and the diverse interests within couples and families. So for example, you go to the park, you know, you want to go to the gym. Your husband wants to walk the dog, or maybe he wants to play baseball, or do something else while you're inside the gym. My husband hates going inside and exercising with a passion. So we don't go to the gym together. We end up doing two different things. There's also the issue of how to handle some of our aging amenities. And I think the Mountain Valley Splash Pool is probably the best example of that. By integrating that into a related program, we can save money on both ends and solve two problems at one time. The other thing we think is important is to utilize existing infrastructure, if at all possible. Taking advantage of existing roads, existing power, water, and gas distribution, outdoor lighting and parking. Rather than creating them from scratch, we all know that building a new road is a hecka lot more expensive than, you know, resealing it or reusing it, et cetera. We want to consider walkability. The committee looked at very carefully where there was the greatest lack of recreational services available, as well as the greatest accessibility challenges. For example, you have working families. You have families with only one car. It was noted that most HOAs and HOA amenities were located on the west side of town, while Valley, Mountain Valley Splash Park is at the center of the old Prescott Valley area and right now serves as the only pool amenity in addition to a various sports field. You know, families that only have one car, or they're both working, they have a limited amount of time, not only money, but time, to get their kids to some of these activities. So where does it make sense as far as where we put things? I know as a retired person, I wouldn't say I have all the time in the world, but I certainly have much more time than I did when I was working full-time and raising my kids and helping cook dinner and all that other jazz, right? And then, the last part of this was cost efficiency. And all of these things kind of filter into that. But we discussed the savings, the potential savings of utilizing land the town already owned versus utilizing land that comes with added financial obligations. Because again, the big picture is, we want this to be feasible. We want people to feel comfortable supporting it, which means we want to work hard to keep the cost at a price point that they're good with. Consideration number two, sunsetting of sales tax. All of us think this is kind of automatically included when you approve a sales tax, but that is not the reality. So we wanted to make sure that, should a sales tax be approved by voters, that the rate decrease proportionally as the project debt is paid, or repaid, excuse me. The next consideration, number three, a phased approach. The committee would like the council to consider initiating this project with a first phase consisting of the core amenities. These are the four amenities that the advisory council voted on unanimously. That's the indoor pool, the gymnasium, the weights and condition space, and the part-time child watch. After weeks of discussion, believe me, there was a lot of discussion. We all, all 15 of us, imagine, 15 of us, if you know who's on that council, unanimously agreed that this was the best starter package. To me, I think it's nothing short of a miracle that we agreed. It was, it was, it was great. I was, it was wonderful. So anyway, so the recreation facility designed to accommodate future expansion with a site large enough to accommodate it. And note that splitting facilities up in the future would be much more costly. You know, it's like building two houses instead of one. You know it's going to cost twice as much, right? Because you've got to provide it. The remaining three amenities that were carried by a majority vote were the group exercise studio, the multipurpose room, and indoor track. And these, of course, are included in the recommendation. So here's the thing. We expect this town to grow and change. We don't all agree how, which way it's going to change, but we know it's going to grow and change. And as it does, we'd like to ensure that this recreation facility is able to grow and change with it. For example, the Prestott YMCA Recreation Center is quite large, but Prescott Valley already has a larger population than they do. While the committee had a range of estimates to consider from Grow and Kitchell, the council should also understand that these estimates must be updated prior to finalizing the total project cost, because we actually shot by amenity. These were not pre-priced packages that we did. So that's going to take time. There's also a range of estimated operating costs. That range is from $2.5 to $3.5 million annually. So part of that is because the YMCA estimate included all-day childcare, a pool, and additional amenities. So they didn't, it wasn't, our package isn't the same as what, what they proposed. Boy, the sound system, it's just all over the place. Anyway, also considered was a redistribution of funds from the Parks and Recs budget. So something we learned is that the plan is to take the Parks and Recs budget and use the same dedicated funding source. That means there's going to be more money left in whatever fund it came out of before. So when we were looking at how to save money, we also thought about whether or not any of that money could be used, sort of like when you buy a house, you're 20% down or something like that. So that was a consideration that we thought about. But ultimately, if the final total project cost is too challenging, then we thought phasing the project could be a solution. phasing the project could be a solution. Consideration number four, indoor/outdoor features for pool area. One of our members recommended having a flexible, removable, or retractable roof, or large roll-up bay windows, so that the pool could operate, serve like an indoor/outdoor. This is an idea also that we talked to Kitchell about, and we found out that actually this is more cost-effective than a traditional enclosure. So not only would this enhance the quality of the aquatic experience, we've all been in indoor pools that had too much chlorine, although I don't think they use it anymore, et cetera, et cetera. This solution also saved money in the initial build, according to Kitchell, and it reduces your long-term operating costs, because you do not have to run the mechanical and the dehumidification system 24/7. There are a lot of days during the year that our weather is pretty good, even though we may have lightning warnings, where we could just let it go naturally. The pool is going to be heated, though, so don't worry about that. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, and Skylar is going to take us through the project timeline and next steps now.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, as you see on the slide, the committee has gone through April through August, so about four months. We're here at the study session, and again, that's just for you all to be informed of the process. Moving forward, we'll have you come back for an approval of the process, and then, once you approve the actual recommendation, then we'll have, we'll come back and have a more in-depth conversation about how to move forward on some of these considerations. For this, there'll be an actual ballot item, and that will happen in November. For a revenue obligation, it's always November on even years, so 2026 November is when it would happen, and we'd have to have a call to election earlier than that, so sometime in the spring for the call to election. If it was approved on the ballot in November, then we could start the construction process, that would most likely take about two, two and a half years, so we're looking at most likely 2028 for an open facility. And with that, that's the presentation that we had, if you have any discussion or questions.
Open up to council for questions or comments, I'll start at my left, anything? Okay, I'll scroll to my right. Skylar, for your timing, when's the next time this comes in front of council?
October.
It'll be in October.
Yeah.
So it is next month.
Yeah.
The first council meeting, or?
Yeah, most likely October 9.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I have a couple of questions, and first of all, I want to thank the committee for all their hard work, definitely, you know, we appreciate the recommendation. But want to get, you know, get probably the biggest question, and again, want to just toss these out there, why wasn't the why considered? Is there a place for the why in the future, such as to manage the facility? And then, third question, because more than likely Bradshaw Mountain High School would use the pool, have we been in contact with the school district to basically partner for funding? So, those are my three questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. So, the committee's purpose was essentially to determine the what in the house, so to determine what amenities would go into a recreation facility, and then how it would be funded. So, discussion on operations wasn't a consideration of the, of the committee. And so, the YMCA is an operator of a recreation facility, and that's, that's why that discussion wasn't the focus of the committee, and that's why the recommendation didn't come out that What, can, can I ask what the second question was again?
So my second question is, you know, and I, forgive me, I, you know, I understand the committee's recommendation is to recommend a, basically, what it sounds like, a municipal recreation facility. I, I'm just curious, you know, of course, they had the, you know, ability to also see if the why was feasible, as opposed to the other, you know, the recommendation, so that was also, that was kind of number, question number one. Question number two is that, did they see a place potentially operationally for the why in the future to manage the facility? And third, with regard to funding, was the school district even just approached, or even or even discussions with the school district, have they occurred?
Yeah, so the YMCA, you know, they always have a place in Prescott Valley, they can always come to Prescott Valley. They, they do have that piece of property by Bob Edwards, and they can always, you know, build a facility there in the future. In terms of the school, we haven't had conversations with the school, but we can, we can do that.
And this council can also, in addition to prior to our next meeting, have questions for staff to get clarification if there's something that comes up as well, so I think that's definitely important. I think it's very important to figure out exactly the total involvement of the citizens and the enthusiasm, we all, they all definitely want a pool, that is clear, I think, mentioned like mandated, it's really, is that the word you used, mandated?
The number one amenity, when we, when the survey asked, it was the number one amenity that people wanted, 72%.
Patricia, can you come to the microphone, just, let's just say that over again, so people at home can hear it.
I'm sorry, in the Parks and Recs survey that they conducted, the indoor pool, or aquatic center, as they put it, received the highest number of yeses, and that was 72% of the people that took the survey.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got one other thing related to... See, that's what happens when I come, pretty powerful, sir, yeah, I don't shy away from it. Now, I would preface this that the council should probably seek either Selena or Legals' advice on the YMCA versus not, but the one thing we found a big difference between the two is the YMCA was effectively fully built on donations, whereas out here, this would be a town-funded construction. So the obligation on costs were different, which does have an impact on the sales tax funding, on the interest rates of those sales tax burdened by whether it's for-profit or not. So with the town building the facility, the YMCA running it, and there being maybe a revenue through that facility, that affects some of the financing. So that's something to consider, I'm not an expert in that, that's just how it was laid out to us, so that's something to think about. All right, thank you, sir. Councilman?
So if the high school's able to use the swimming pool, which I'm all for it, I think that would be amazing for them to be able to do that, would there be like a time allotment where it wouldn't be open to other swimmers, so that there's not a conflict of kids getting into the wrong lanes? And then, would we have enough lanes for a competition that we were planning in, in advance? So like, what if we were planning on three and they needed five? So that's something we would need to really look at, too, for sign of the build of the pool, so.
Yeah, we can, we can always arrange that agreement however we need to, and six lanes was a consideration, so that there could be competition.
Councilman?
And I was going to say, I, I thought that the, having Bradshaw Mountain, the swim team was, you know, a consideration in pool discussions, so that's a good thing.
Councilman?
I, I have another question. Has, has anyone looked into the possibility that there might be some kind of outside funding, or grants, or corporate sponsorship, anything in that vein that would reduce our cost and our tax burden?
We, we have looked into it, and there's, there's not much opportunity in terms of grants, funding for a facility like this. We'll continue to look into different options to reduce the cost.
Councilman?
Thank you guys for, for taking the time to do this. In your presentation, you show that there's part-time childcare. Why did we not go to a full-time childcare? Because we are a young community, we do have young families, why did we forget that
So, yeah, the, the part-time childcare was just the two-hour, all-day childcare was a consideration, ultimately was a decision by the committee to not include that.
Yeah, you're not wrong that data pointed to childcare being a need.
A need, we do have a need, because we have young families and first responders, and we all, well, we always look at affordable housing, that's part of what the why has, why did we miss that demographic?
Yeah, it wasn't missed. Looking at the data, we didn't forget about it, or we didn't miss it, it came down to how the facility would be built, funded, financed. And then the relationship of the town not being willing to run full-time childcare, that was stated. So that would mean some sort of partner, whether it's a YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, some other commercial entity, would have to come in and run and manage that childcare, which would then potentially make the facility for-profit, which would then change the financial avenues that could be taken to fund the facility.
Okay.
That was just the primary direction the conversation went, that doesn't mean it's not a possibility.
I just feel like we're missing an entire demographic, and we're missing the young adults in this, in this entire plan.
Sure, I completely hear you, and I would say we didn't miss it, it was very much discussed over three, four meetings, and I...
But we didn't include it.
What's that?
But we didn't include it.
Correct.
That's correct. And, and I was a little bit surprised at the, actually, it was another unanimous vote, not to include it, and some of the other factors besides the impact on the funding mechanism, was that we found out that the YMCA already has an all-day childcare center in the works, I think it's over on Roberts, it's not open yet. And that was kind of a surprise to us, and it definitely should be followed up with to find out how big it is and everything else, but they're, they have a building. The other thing is, is that having the town to run a childcare also exposes the town to a lot of liability. Some of you who worked for large businesses and stuff, that's like the number-one employee asks, why don't we have a childcare? And basically, it's due to the liability, there's an enormous liability associated with that, and, and, you know, meeting a lot of federal regulations also. But I think the turning point was one of our members who actually homeschools. There is a very large homeschool schooling contingent in the town of Prescott Valley, and I think that was the thing that kind of sealed the deal, that other than, you know, there's a lot of private daycares in the town, including those run by religious institutions and its main source of income, but that kind of sealed the deal, but it was discussed at length. So I couldn't agree that it was missed, it was a very deliberate decision, and after everybody got done talking about their view of it, we took the vote, and it didn't make it. But I, I think the fact that the YMCA is doing a daycare, they're working on it right now, was part of that decision. Thank you.
Anything else, ma'am? Anything else, ma'am? Barton, anything to add?
No.
Again, reiterate to Vice Mayor, appreciate all the work from those that dedicate their time, showing up, and doing something to try to better the community, so it says a lot about you and everyone that showed up and your team, Mr. Barton, I appreciate that. And if we have any other questions, we'll see you before next meeting.